Three, under E consideration of setting the thirteen fourteen mil rate. Second from the last paragraph. So Mr. Reynolds wanted to know how much the previous years had totaled. That would be previous years of payments had totaled. And if I could offer a suggestion, I don't remember exactly where it is, but Teresa was referred to as selectmen. Teresa, I don't know how you feel about that. If you're good, I just, I offer, just as a question.
No, I'm good with it, thanks.
Okay.
But thank you.
Okay, is that? All right. Moved in second in? All in favor?
Passed.
Next, new business. First two on the new business, consideration of use of public property for a Halloween event. That is being tabled. Second, the library report, Alyssa Gifford, library trustee. I'm told that they don't have the proper information to make that presentation this evening, so that will also be tabled for a meeting in the future. All right. Review of new zone of BA bylaws as submitted by the zoning board of appeals.
They're attached to the E packet. The ZBA wants to pass them by you for your input, for your consideration. They are able to do this on their own legal authority under main law as outlined in the summary, but before we run them through the town attorney and send them back for their formal enactment, they wanted to get some feedback from the board of selectmen and as a courtesy to let you see them.
Anybody have any comments on those? Yes.
I thought they were well put together.
I did too.
I think Peter Levitt deserves some wonderful credit for pushing that and moving those forward. And I think if the zoning board of appeals would like them, and as I read them, I think it's a nice, nice guidelines.
So to hear.
I agree.
Do we need a vote on that?
I think we ought to. I'll make a motion to, it's not accept because they don't need our acceptance, but recommend that the zoning board of appeals has put together a nice set of bylaws.
Second.
All in favor of that response? Very good. How consideration of bids received and possible tax, or impossible awarding of tax-quiet property sales. Questions on that? That is involving three properties? Yes?
It seems that there's four properties, correct? But only three of them got any bids or any payers or?
As far as I know, all four did.
No.
Really? Only three?
Yeah, the one, the .12 acres didn't look like it had any.
Oh, okay.
Lot forty-one, lot fifty, did not receive any bids.
Okay, will we start with the first one? Map oh three oh, lot oh three. We have a motion?
So we are motioning on the, who it gets awarded to?
Yep.
We are recommending that the town accept the high bid on the three properties we did receive bids on, and the bids were sufficient to relieve the tax obligations.
So the bids include the tax, back taxes?
No, no. The bid is the bid.
I didn't think so. I thought it was the bid and then the back taxes.
No.
Yeah, that was one of the questions that was asked, and it said that it would be paid out of the proceeds. So are we naming people or businesses? Or they can make a motion to accept MGM builders' bid for map thirty, lot zero three, Haskell Avenue?
Second.
Any amount of sixteen thousand?
In the amount of sixteen thousand five dollars.
Second.
Want to do each one? Do each one individually? Yeah, let's do each one individually. Any questions on that? Yes, Mike?
Last time we did this, we had a discussion about what the town should accept for a bid, if we were going to have any minimums, if we were just looking for the taxes paid. We have looked at these lots now for, I think going on probably eighteen months, as we've talked about this, and we were going to handle it last year and then decided to push it to this year, but overall, I'm disappointed with the bids.
Sixteen thousand off of sixty-seven.
It seems to me, part of our discussion the last time we did this, is we were looking for at least fifty percent of the assessed value. And, you know, it's not a policy, but I think as part of our discussion, when you go back to those, you know, at that point, it seems to me that that's what we were looking for. None of these bids is even close to fifty percent. The only one that's close is the third one, map thirty-three, lot eleven, and I think the only reason that that's close to fifty percent is because of the amount of back taxes So I just throw that out for discussion, if folks on the board who were here last time remember that, or for folks who weren't, if you have an opinion on this. Now granted, we've received nothing from these properties, you know, for going on years now. We've had no communication with these folks. They don't want the properties, so we get them by default. So anything we get for them, if they turn into tax-paying properties, is great, I think. But I would hate somebody to come in and bid a order of the value, then come in and see our assessor and say, "Look, this is what it's worth," which is not what the assessor's going to accept, and then lower the tax value. You know, a tax value can't be lowered on a bid sale like this because it's not really market value, so.
What's he saying?
I throw that out for discussion.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with the assessment that you have made and the conclusion that you make with respect to the property tax assessment. I think these are seen as a distressed sale, and you wouldn't necessarily see a change in the valuation.
Did you put it out there, advertise it enough for enough people to show interest? Or, that being said also, did you have more interest, and then when it was time, not as many people showed up? Or did you really not hear anything and then?
I would say relative to other, you know, sales of this type that I've seen, we had a significant amount of interest and a significant number of bids. And, you know, I'd also argue that although the bids are not, you know, particularly great bids, they are bunched fairly, you know, closely, at least in this first one, and so I think it's a fair reflection of what people thought it was worth.
Are these buildable lots?
Barely.
But they are?
Yeah.
There was even the question of can they subdivide that first one? That wasn't known, but.
You also have, obviously, I mean, we're recommending the sale because we feel it was, you know, bona fide and, you know, no defects process, but you obviously can reject these and start again, or decide they're, you know, too low.
Yeah, I'm of the opinion, I'd rather have the cash and hold on to an empty lot.
Say it, you're feeling that they could go up, or they would go up?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, I'm not saying that. I'm saying you can decide that. I don't, I think that you got what you're going to get.
I agree with Joe, cash in hand. That's just my opinion. I'm not sure you're going to get much more than what's out there right now.
Hey, is there any other comment on this?
Yes, Charlie? Charles Levitt, fourteen Levitt Road, East Raymond. Just for a little historical perspective, the first time we initially put out tax-quiet properties, I think, Mr. Reynolds, you took a part in that particular bid process, and one of the properties, our minimum standard for that was twenty percent. I protested, thought the twenty percent number was too low. I was on the board at the time when we had the discussion on the second round of properties. I don't ever recall hearing any minimums or any fifty percents. I could stand corrected if it's in the record. However, our initial offerings, the first time we did this, we set a low minimum of twenty percent. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's twenty percent of cost, or twenty percent of assessed?
I don't know if there's any policy on that. There's no policy on it.
Right, which it made twenty percent. It was like twenty-two, twenty-four percent, the first one.
Yeah. Do you have a motion?
You already have one.
Motion, we have seconds. All in favor of accepting map thirty, or map, yes, oh three oh, lot oh two three? All in favor? Done.
I think you need to call for a no.
You need to call for a no votes.
Were there any no votes?
I think you had called for it.
I'm sorry, I didn't call for a no vote. Did you, did you vote down on that?
No. But there were only four hands raised when I, still for a line, whether you call for it or not, I guess.
Okay, the next one is map oh three one, lot oh three. The bid is nine thousand two, and the value is, is that number two or three?
It's about fifteen percent.
About fifteen percent, yep.
So just so I understand this correctly, the taxes that are owed on this property is eighty-four hundred dollars?
Yeah, right.
And we will receive nine thousand, and part of that nine thousand would go back in to pay off that eighty-four hundred? So in the end, we'd prosper of like a thousand bucks, six hundred bucks?
Five hundred and fourteen. I'll make a motion to reject the bid on map oh three one, lot oh three.
That one's too low compared to the other one.
Any further comments on that? All in favor of rejecting?
That's rejected.
So does that one go back up again? You guys want to rebit, it gets rebit out?
Down the road. Down the road, I wouldn't suggest.
We can bid it, we can list it with an agent, we have lots of choices what to do with that now.
Right, and you may decide, by the way, that this bid process is not working for you. That's an excellent point. I know other towns have done, you know, sale, I think Bridgeston did a sale, with going through some sort of a process to select an agent, and have marketed them that way.
So do we have, do we have, like, when we put it out to bids, like Charlie was just saying, as far as the twenty percent, do we have somewhere that we say, "Okay, minimum bid of this, and maybe we should put that in there," or fifty percent, like Mike says? I mean, it's a, it's a lot, pretty cheap, but on the other hand, it is sitting there for so long.
You can do that, but you can also do that in this process.
Right. But just putting, I mean, I think more putting it out there, though, for people to understand.
Save a step if we put it out there, yes, at twenty percent.
Yeah, so it's got to be at least twenty percent.
They would know going in that it's assessed that.
Then we don't have to send it back like we're doing this one.
Right.
Correct. So, no, I agree with Teresa, it's a good thing to put into that pack, into the packet that is given at time of bidding.
Let's check the next one, map zero three three, lot zero one one.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid for map zero three three, lot zero one one, Zero Carb Road, Lawrence and Rebecca Post, for the amount of sixteen thousand three thirty-six sixty-four.
Second.
This lot is unbuildable, unlike the first two. So this really only has value to an abutter, or an association, or something along those lines.
And they're buying you for the value of the back taxes?
And it's close to fifty percent of the value.
Any further comment? All in favor of accepting? Done. And finally, map oh four one, lot oh five oh.
There are no bids.
No bids.
No bids, okay.
That is also an unbuildable lot.
I think I toured that lot. It is, it is. All right, move on.
So, just as a question here, if somebody sees this on TV, realizes we rejected it, listened to our thing, can they bid or ask us for an opportunity to purchase this now?
No.
Even though we own it, it would have to go up? It would have to be free market, right?
Yeah, I think you have to start either this process again, or you would go with the, an alternate process with a realtor, which, you know, I've never done it that way, but I think that may have some merit. But I don't think you can have negotiation with somebody.
Okay. Also, do we want to consider a twenty percent?
I think that it should be higher. I believe it should be higher.
We would do twenty percent of assessed value plus taxes owed, or something like that, as a minimum.
Plus taxes owed.
That makes sense.
Possibly.
I'd be careful of that one, because you end up sometimes with parcels that, you know, have significant balances, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that piece.
Percentage-wise, or?
I would go with the percent. I wouldn't go with the plus back taxes.
I personally would just keep it just the way it is, and then you always have the right to reject.
Reject it here.
But then you got to go back through the process. If they know the process in the beginning, they're going to go in and they're going to say, "Okay, it's worth sixty-seven thousand, I need to be bidding at least thirty-three five, or I'm not going to get it." And then it saves us time.
We're saying, by and large, right now, that we're looking at twenty percent. And we've said that before, and I don't think we need to have a policy on it, maybe.
There are other issues, you know, involved, and, I mean, I've never bid myself on this sort of property, but there, you know, there may be concerns, you know, title concerns, sometimes there are access concerns, sometimes there, you know, is it a buildable lot? There are various, I think whenever you sell something in this sort of a fashion, you know, whether it be real property or a fixed asset, when you sell by bid, it's seen by many people as a distressed sale.
Right.
And so people are expecting to get a good deal.
And bargain, yeah.
Yeah, they're not, they're not looking to pay, you know, the full retail price when you do bid sales typically.
Yes, Mike?
A little summary on my purchase a few years ago. The lot that I purchased was valued at around nineteen thousand dollars. I bid thirteen, and the town had not had any contact with the owner for years. I could not find the owner. So in order for me to get a clear title on that, I actually have to find the owner or the next of kin, and make sure that there is no other claim on that. Now, according to the current title, there is only one owner. I mean, they're in, and no known address, no forwarding address, so, so there are some of those issues. If the town has had contact with these people and they've just chosen not to pay it, that's a whole other issue, but I know the one that I, the one that I purchased, all of the certified mail had been returned.
Right, because that question, you know, came up in the pre-bid meeting. I mean, people, you know, want assurances as to marketable title, they want legal assurances, and that, all that due diligence, exactly right, is on them, not on us. So when you do that, I mean, you know, that is an adverse effect on the value of the property, I would argue. If you were to do some of that work, and, and, and I'm not saying you should, or whatever do that, because towns don't do that, but, you know, you're selling something as-is with them doing that legal piece of it, which I think affects the value negatively.
Okay, we're exhausted here, ready to move on to the next issue. Consideration and acceptance of November fifth, 2013, election warrant. Louise Lester, Louise, do you want to accept that?
The board of selectmen doesn't actually have to sign a warrant for this election because it is a state election, but I thought I'd put it in here and ask you to announce the election. Hope people will come out to vote. It is November fifth, it's a Tuesday, and the polls will be open from seven AM to eight PM. We also are presently doing absentee ballots, so if anybody wants to vote at home, they can call, and we can mail it to them, or they can come into the town office and vote right there.
I'll make a motion to appoint Lori Forbes as the one for the November fifth, 2013 election.
Second.
Any questions or any comments?
She's very worthy.
Yes, she is, yep. All in favor?
I have a question for Louise before she runs away, if I could, Sam. Sam?
Yes.
I have a question for Louise before she runs away.
Don't run.
What's on the ballot, Louise?
Five bond issues, lots of money.
Five bond issues from the state.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right, next is consideration of reinstituting the Roadrunner Town Newspaper in cooperation with the Wyndham Eagle. Teresa?
I sent you E packets, the thing with Wyndham Eagle. I don't recommend it after all because I did some other checking around and cut back even more. I gave you a paper tonight with five different, four different options on it. I would hopefully recommend option three or option four. I've been, got prices late this afternoon from Minuteman, and what it pretty much sums up to is, some of the people at the town office have been fantastic in stepping up and volunteering their time to help. I didn't ask them because I don't want to put anything more on people's plates, like Danielle and Sue and Rita and all them up front, and, but they all said, if they've got time, they'll help put it together, which saves a lot, so we can either choose to go with Minuteman Printing, because a lot of people are saying they want to keep Raymond their own newspaper and not part of the Wyndham Eagle. And so I got a price from Minuteman for twenty-six hundred copies of the newspaper. That was having the mail deliver them to everybody. We don't need to mail them at first. We can go a lot less, maybe go about twelve hundred copies, maybe. I can probably get a cheaper price, definitely than the six forty-six. They will deliver them to Raymond, and then what we will do is put them out different places, like the Good Life, Obajon, Chipmunks, the Town, these different places. The other thing we possibly do is do it in-house, where we print off copies. Nancy Yates says it's one cent a copy right now to print it off ourselves, but, you know, if we can get Minuteman to do it, it's going to be cheaper, I think, in the long run, because toner cartridges are really expensive. To help offset that, we can charge the businesses in town, like twenty-five dollars, and that's cheap advertising. They can put an ad in for twenty-five, and it'll only be monthly, but see how it goes for maybe the first year, and if we charge each business like twenty-five dollars, they can put things in there, like, you know, the new doughnut shop, or, you know, Al mexicana's having two dollars off an entree, or whatever, and, but, and then one other thing was, that I don't have one here, is Lori Forbes, speaking, which being awesome, has volunteered to step up with Danielle, too, and John Hanley, too, is the Wyndham Chat, as far as getting the Wyndham web going, and having people have them moderate, they said they would volunteer to do that. Trying to keep it short.
What do you think?
Well, what's going to be in it? Who's writing? Who's putting the stories in?
Oh, everybody. I'm going to send a cover letter out to all, like, the schools, the, all the committees that we have on here, we have the Boy Scouts, we have the Girl Scouts, we have dance clubs, it's anybody that wants to put things in. It's going to be like it was before.
Who's the editor? Who's going to decide what goes in?
It's going to be like a couple of us, is what it is. And when I say us, I'm volunteering to do it as being on the board, to start it off, but I'm also going to get input from other people. It's not going to be a slam fest, by no means. It's going to be a newspaper about what's going on in town, you know, about, you know, you can, anything and everything that's going on in the town of Raymond, is what it is. And, and we can set some guidelines as to who, what stuff you want in, what stuff you don't.
The?
Sorry?
The old Roadrunner, I think, was a vehicle in order to, I keep, I think, keep people much better informed and maybe aware of what's happening in town. I get frequent questions from people about they'd like to see it back, that's something that, you know, is a common refrain in the town office, and I don't want to steal any Brian Walker's thunder from next month when he reports out on the employee retreat, but I think it was very interesting that the town employees enthusiastically, overwhelmingly want to go back into the production of the Roadrunner, to make sure that people do understand what's happening in town, the positive things that are happening in town, and the good things that are happening in the community. We don't have very much news coverage, there's a real dearth of coverage, and so many people lament the loss of that resource in order to make sure that people are kept up to date, informed about community events and town happenings, and, and the many positive things that are happening in the community. So as far as the employees go, I think they're, I can say they're extremely enthusiastic about participating, myself included, and I know that the Raymond Revitalization Committee would be very interested in it as well, and supportive.
How do we? Oh, go ahead.
The Economic Task Force that we're doing, too, as far as bringing businesses in, it advertises business, it lets people know what's going on in Raymond, it's pulling everything together, everybody together in the town.
You can ensure, you can ensure objectivity in this?
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, that's my big concern is.
Well, it's not, it's not going to be just me.
No, I mean, who's putting it all together?
What we had, to tell you, to tell you what happened in the past, we paid someone, John Hanley, and prior to that, we had, you know, Norma Richard, and I think, I think Nathan Poor were co-editors. I was never editor, I was always a contributor. I didn't, you know, feel that I should be in that position, and so we could certainly get a community volunteer, like a Lori Forbes or somebody else who might want to step up. We're not, you know, confined to Lori Forbes, but it seems like oftentimes, these, the same volunteers volunteer over and over again. But if there's somebody out there watching television who's interested in this and wants to step up, that would be welcomed, but I don't think that's such a big issue. It was never an issue in the previous iterations of the Roadrunner. You know, we tried, obviously, to, it was not a vehicle for, I guess, editorial comments or letters to the editor, that sort of thing. It was more a town newsletter that morphed into a newspaper-sized publication that got out the news of the town in school, and I think we should continue with the school as well.
And Lori Forbes is very excited about it. She used to do it before, too, and, and the only reason why I'm saying I'm doing this is because I don't want to volunteer anybody else if I'm the one that's taking this on. Do you know what I mean? So it's kind of like, don't offer to do it unless you're willing to do it yourself, is what it is. And I have gotten so many offers to help on this, so it's not just me.
Oh, I don't think it's a bad idea. I just want to say that.
No, it is, it is meant, I don't think it's meant to put forward a point of view other than, here's what's happening in the town.
Well, and if everybody's keeping, keeping to the facts, like, like, for instance, Jordan Small Middle School is, is being, they got a huge thing from USM, as far as their work and everything else, that just hit the Wyndham Eagle, little flyer that they just sent out from the school, that would be great to go in there, that type of things. The new doughnut shop opening up in town, and what they offer, and that, the Boy Scouts, when they have their big things down at Camp Hines, and everybody would have to get in.
It seems like there's so many different things, from, you know, baseball schedules, you know, this, these are the games that are going on, how's the ice in the winter, and what lakes?
Exactly.
Where you can go, and what trails are open, what it is, even. even do a special edition and throw a trail map in there, and, you know, I don't, but this is a lot of different things, there is...
As a, of, a former newspaper editor myself, I would like to just help out, whenever possible.
And, and that's, but I didn't want to volunteer anybody without, in putting it on them, not knowing what everybody else's jobs and lives were. But it's enough where everybody has really been excited about this and volunteering, you know, to help out and stuff.
So, what do you, what do you, yes, Mike?
I would guess that the former Roadrunner had guidelines, editorial guidelines, number of word guidelines, that, you know, just, just some guidelines. So, I'm, I'm guessing we have that in the archive somewhere, it might be at the school, because I think the school was very instrumental in originally getting it going, and however it turned.
You must be a school public...
Produced, right. So, um, and I, and I, Teresa, I applaud you for looking at the, the money-saving options here, but I think if you do something like this, you get it in everybody's house.
Okay.
Yeah, personally, I, I just, I just think you mail it, you get it in someone's mailbox once a month, if it's going to be once a month. The whole point of, of doing something like this is to get the information into the hands of people who may not have the internet, aren't getting the, the low subscription to the local paper, so I, I just, I just think, if you're going to go through the effort, get it to everybody.
That would actually be option two, which, because to mail it, just so you know the mailing, it's $375 to mail it to every person's house, and there's 2,516 people. We would do a couple extra just to put it around places. Um, it's a $200 startup fee, it's one-time fee, and it's a $200 yearly imprint fee. So, that's...
For the bulk mailing.
And the bulk mailing is the, is the 374.
Now, you know, Lakes Region, for example, is very well-read, and very highly circulated, and people pick it up at places like you're suggesting.
I think what I was trying to do is get it out there first.
So, I think that's very possible.
Get it on the budget, get it to see how everybody's looking at it. Um, and, and when you talk about those guidelines, one of the things they did not do, because Lori told me this, is they did not allow in, um, the advertising from businesses. I don't quite know why, but this way, it's money that we can get back and offset it. The other thing that came up tonight, when I came up to register the car, was, um, like, classified ads, say somebody has an apartment or house for rent, charge them five bucks. It's not that much, but it's five extra bucks that helps pay for...
Well, that's why I think you need guidelines in place, what you want to accept. Because, you know, the last thing you want is a court case about what you didn't allow into the newspaper.
Because some months you'll have 30 articles, another month you're going to have 10.
Well, and I think we based it off of 12, 12 pages, just because I'm try, I was trying to get a price. And I said it'd be anywhere from 10 to 12 pages, and they went high on the 12 pages, as far as I go. And, and I'm fine with that. I think the big thing is, is, is getting the talks going, getting to say, where does the selectmen want to go with this? And saying, okay, if we want to move forward with this, then let's get, we can get the guidelines. And I have so many people that are willing to help me with those guidelines too. And, because I've been getting input from Lori, from Nancy, from Danielle, from Kevin Woodbury, everybody on this, which has been great.
Go ahead.
I think, uh, to have the, uh, the guidelines, to have that codified is, is essential, and, so I think that's the first step. As far as the content and generating content, a lot of it went through me, from the town employee side, and there was never any issue with content. The problem was usually too much content, and then sending it in, and it would be winoed, winoed down, and, and maybe it had to wait a month or whatever, if it wasn't urgent. But I, I don't see any, any problem at all filling, filling the content piece of it, but, but having some guidelines up front that everyone agrees on, I think is essential. And, and I'm not sure you had so much of that formal guideline with the last version of, I mean, there was a, a word limit, there, there, you know, there were certain things that weren't accepted, but I'm not sure that there was any kind of a document that outlined all that.
There are guidelines that you can get online, as a matter of fact, for newspapers, period. Um, so where do we want to go with this? Do you want to, do we...
I, I still have a question. Does the school contribute anything to the printing of the Wyndham Eagle, or?
No.
No.
Um, one of the things about the Wyndham Eagle is, they have a really hard time getting stuff out of the Raymond schools right now. She says, so they call, they call, they call. One of the things I did do about a week and a half ago, is I wrote an email to Kelly Mank, because she's the one that I was real, originally pushing this with, and I asked her to write a letter that I could present to you guys, from her perspective, as far as this merging together. But the more that I really started talking to even more people and, and breaking this down, I have the problem, I think, the $1,000 a month, I really do. Um, I'm trying to find ways to get it back to the people, but cut back.
That's, that's about, you know, about, if that's the total, that's the total production cost?
That would be going through the Wyndham Eagle, if we get it from Minuteman, and we mail it, have it mailed out, and alls we'd have to do is drop it off at the post office. Uh, Minuteman delivers it to us here. They'll bring it from South Portland, deliver it, and we just take it to the post office. That's the 1,021. That doesn't include tax, but he says we just need the tax exempt number to do that.
I, I may be wrong, but that sounds...
You should be able to get tax exempt status if the town's printing it.
Right, well, that's what he said, just needs a number, yeah.
I may be wrong, but that number sounds lower than where we were at the end of the, the Roadrunner.
No, we went, it was 7,500 when the Roadrunner died.
But didn't the school contribute as well?
Yeah. Well, the school had it, it was around the $13,000 line item, but that was 20 years ago.
But we also had a communications coordinator that worked for us as well, and some of that was in that, right?
Yeah.
So, there was the printing piece, there was the communications coordinator piece.
Charlie?
Charles Lovett, 1411 Road East, Raymond. As I, I recall, Mr. Willard, you were more accurate in your, uh, remembrance of the cost. I think all costs included, when we, uh, finally, uh, put to bed and put the rest, the, uh, old Raymond Roadrunner was closer to $30,000 a year. Primarily had started, uh, as a school publication, where, uh, the town employees did most of the labor, and the, uh, school contributed the articles. We did all the collation, we did most of the printing. We, we essentially funded the, the effort. There were, there was very little in editorial guidelines. I do disagree with Mr. Willard, there were editorial comments made. I wrote front-page, uh, uh, comments about the budgets, uh, that were published in the Raymond Roadrunner, uh, regarding my perspective from the select board, uh, as to the direction the board had taken on both school budgets at the time and town budgets. One of the great reasons why, uh, the Roadrunner, uh, expired was because of the additional costs, and at the time, the, uh, the, the major, um, impact it had on staff at Town Hall, putting together the work. So, it, it, they weren't happy campers at the time, uh, because of the amount of work they were doing compared to what was coming out of the school department. So, it was viewed as unequal sharing of, of the labor at the time. So, uh, I would also ask, since this is the public questioning period for this, is, uh, could we have those four alternatives shared with the public, so that people will know what would mean, but there's, I hope hundreds of people out there watching tonight, it originally is an agenda item, saying that we're partnering with the Wyndham Eagle, and now, uh, that's what the agenda item says.
It, it wasn't that we were partnering with them, that we were putting it out there, and these were things I just put together real quick, because I just got the figures sent at 4:30. You want them, they're here.
Yeah, I, I just think for the matter of the public, I don't care, because I'm, I would, I would absolutely be opposed to this. Because when we start getting on that slippery slope of trying to determine editorial policy, I agree with Mr. Bruno, we'll be, uh, targets again for another potential lawsuit, uh, when we start determining what is positive content and what is content. Mr. Bruno's, uh, or Mr. Willard's determination of what's positive, or Mrs. Sadak, uh, may not be other people's idea of what is positive con, uh, content. So, uh, I think this is probably, without having real figures to look at, and, uh, the alternatives put before, uh, it does not seem ripe for anything but tabling and coming back later. Thank you.
Sam.
Yeah, um, thank you for reminding me of, uh, the, the editorial, uh, use of the Roadrunner. That, that is true, that from, very, very infrequently, I, I had forgotten that, actually, but very, very infrequently, it was used that way, but, but for the most part, it was a vehicle to get out the news of the town and the school. And so, that's why I reiterate the idea that if you're going to do it, you need to have strict guidelines that say what you can and can't do. I think in the instances of, uh, what Mr. Levitt is talking about, it probably was something that was either encouraged, or allowed, uh, by the selectmen, or it was something that was submitted, and then the group had to make a determination, absent any guidelines. And so, without guidelines, you do have the potential to have, you know, problems, and, and, uh, the concerns that Joe has. So, I think that is an important point.
Sam.
But I don't think, it was, my point though, is that I, I don't think it was typically a vehicle for, for that use. It was, it was more the good news of the town and the school.
And I think, and there can be a committee for this too, and I think it's not a matter of my opinion, Joe's opinions, or anybody else's. I think it's a matter of, okay, the Boy Scouts are having the pie-in-with derby, can everybody come out to support them? The Lions Club is having this. It's not a matter of somebody giving your opinion on one topic, it's a matter of facts that are going on in the town. Do you know what I mean? Like, in, like, events that are going on in town, baseball schedules that are going on in the town. It's not a matter of what one person's opinion is over somebody else's, it's just events.
I agree with you there, but it's just, it, it can be a slippery slope in that fashion of, why, you know, why didn't my schedule get put in there? Oh, well, you showed up, you know, it didn't get here till two days late. And them not taking that, for a good reason, and them pushing something further. So, to have guidelines is, is definitely a necessity.
And you guys are coming up with the opposite from what people were giving me. Are you going, they're saying you're not going to get the articles, you're going to have to bug people to get the articles.
No, I don't think that...
And you guys are coming up with the opposite now, because, and I said, I don't think I will have an issue. And in this case...
But some people, some people will be like, oh, I'll get it to you, and then I'll get it to you, and you waiting for them. And then that's holding everybody else up, and...
Right, and it's the guidelines, and it's a, a small committee that we get together, and we say, okay, this is the week we put the newspaper together, we have to have it to them, and six, 10, 15, however many people want to be on it, here we go. And if there's any issues, that there's an, that there's an issue or question about, then the committee makes the decision. You know what I mean, as far as, and if it's, and the guidelines will be set down in the letters that go out to everybody. If you don't have it in by Friday at 4 o'clock, you don't get it in Monday's paper, because we have to have it depressed by this time. You know, and I found, found that out from other stuff, that, you know, and, and you say, sorry, put it in next month, make sure you get it in the beginning of the month, instead of the end. You know, and, and we were talking, we were joking around about the advertisers, I don't want to be by so-and-so. Well, you know what? First one comes in, they come in as they, get put on as they come in.
Yes, Julie?
Julie Southland, Lake Hill Road, Raymond. The Lake Region Weekly has a nice section inside Raymond. If the schedules and everything need to be put out, why can't you send them in and have them printed weekly, in the Lake Region Weekly, in the section inside Raymond? About the new shops opening, donuts, the Lions Club, et cetera, et cetera. Why bring up another expense, in my opinion, we don't need? We have a nice section in a newspaper that already has a great, a number of people that read it, and who are very attentive to getting things in the paper, and making it accurate. And they already have the guidelines, they have editors, and they have all the printing and everything all set up, and they do a good job. And they've got it in several, many, many different places, I have found, of the Lake Region Weekly. Why add another newspaper? Why add another cost? When you can put all that schedule, when you can put all the notifications, right in there? And let their board, let their editors be the ones who do the fair decisions on what goes in. Schedules, the school events, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, I know that the editor's not going to say that, that it's not going to go in. If you talk to them, and submit them, and they get a lot of coverage. I see other things that money could be spent on, like puddles on Valley Road.
Thank you. Mike?
I think this is, uh, a great idea for future discussion, future fleshing. I mean, I, I think that, um, having a discussion like this in October, prior to budget season, and, and having time to, to flush it out more, and, and, you know, get a better idea for, for working towards the budget, and, and having more of these discussions as, as part of our dis, budget discussions, is, is probably a, a good thing.
Okay, I, I agree with you. So, we, do we have a motion to move forward on this? Do we need that, Joe?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you have to give some direction to what you want, I think, is... I personally want to see the guidelines. I personally want to see what the business plan is, what the model is, how much is it really going to cost in the long run?
Yeah.
I think it, you know, this is just like, okay, here it is, what do you think?
Because it's a great idea, but there's a lot of nuts and bolts to go into it, to make sure that everything's tight.
So, you know, I, I will agree that this should be tabled. I'll make a motion to table for future, uh, a future meeting to discuss more details.
Any comments?
What do you want?
Second.
Sorry.
You can't discuss a tabling motion. Why don't you make a table?
No, you can't.
Yeah.
You do.
I need to know what's discussed for later. What do you want me bringing back, is what I'm saying when you're talking tabling.
If you have a tabling motion, it's been seconded, there's no further discussion.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Next, consideration of Peter Levitt's resignation from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
We were just talking about how great he was.
Yes, indeed. Uh, he's been on the Zoning Board of Appeals since December 9th, 1986. He's one of the original members, and he is known, I am told, and I, 1986, I was just a baby. Uh, he's known as fair, diligent, and thorough, and I've seen that in, in his activities on the, on the board. I think he'll be a, a major loss.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Peter Levitt from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
Any discussion?
I mean, I, I would like to just say that there's a lot of history there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and it's a, it's never a good thing to lose that much institutional memory.
You're right. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Three to two. Sorry to lose him. Next, consideration and acceptance of road bond post issuance compliance policy.
Uh, this is a policy and related procedures, actions required to keep the town compliant with the Internal Revenue Service Code of 1986 and the U.S. Treasury Department Regulations. It, uh, will be enforced, and covers the life of the bonds, and, uh, the ongoing monitoring and consultations required with bond counsel, as where, as well as various financial reporting requirements, and many other things, but, so this is a part of the $2 million road bond issuance. I, I will be going to, uh, Boston on Thursday with Dick Ranigan and Nancy Yates to, um, secure, hopefully to begin the process of securing a rating for the town. We've been working in overdrive, getting all the materials ready that would enable the town to get this, uh, rating, and to, uh, to substantiate, I guess, our application. So, this is another piece of this, this policy, uh, and it has been vetted by the town attorney and, uh, and bond counsel. So, we're recommending approval.
I'll make a motion to accept the post issuance compliance policy.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Yes. Next, the period of public comment. I think we all know the rules of that. Uh, if you have a point to make, uh, make the point, don't make it three times. And with that, any public comment? What was that?
Yes.
And we move, move on now to town manager report, communications?
The next meeting I'm recommending for November 12th, if that works for everyone.
Yes?
Okay, all set.
That's up. All right. Selectment Communications. Yes, Mike?
I know that Lisa wasn't here to do their trustee report, but I have a quick update for the library. If I can pull it up here. Just a couple of things going on. The annual appeal is still happening, so anybody who could help out with the annual appeal, they get more than 35% of their budget through local donations. Couple of highlights of things coming up. Tomorrow night, author and humorist Susan Poole will be at the library at 6:00 p.m. Next Wednesday, the 16th, is the annual board meeting at 6:00 p.m. And on Wednesday, October 30th, is the Adult Book Group, and I believe I have this month's book called Haunted Ground by Aaron Hart. Also, the library is looking for donations of candy. Each year, the, as folks know, the Raymond Village puts on a great thing down in, in that neck of the woods for trick-or-treaters. And they expect over 400 kids to come to their door. So if anybody has a little extra candy and they would be willing to drop it off at the library, that would be great. The library also helps to distribute some of that candy to the neighbors to help them have candy as well. So, so if that could be done by Sunday, October 27th, so that they can help get it out to the, the homes before Halloween on the 31st, that would be great. Thank you, Sam.
Good, thank you. Fiscal Ward Warrants.
I'd like to make a motion to accept payroll expense summary dated 10/8/2013 for the amount of $46,704.91.
Second.
All in favor? Yes?
I'd also like to make a motion to accept treasurer's warrant dated 10/8/2013 for the amount of $1,232,892.37.
Second.
I assume that includes accounting.
That includes $627,814 for the Cumberland County tax, $508,304 for bond payments.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Three more? Three, yeah. One, two, one, under that?
Seven?
No?
Doubt.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
That's accounting tax.
Let's see if we catch up.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
You already have it, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All's in favor?
All's in favor? Opposed?
Please.
[laughing]